Good evening, Madam Secretary. Could have a roll call, please.
Edward Tate.
Present.
Michael Thorwart.
Here.
Mary McKee.
Here.
Joseph Hidalgo.
Present.
Ed Solomon.
Here.
Mike Roosevelt.
Here.
Bob Hickey.
Here.
You had a Pally? She's not in. And Krista Marcel.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. From there, we'll go to the superintendent report. Good evening, Dr. Sanco.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board and community. Mr. Solomon, thank you. With the opening of school only 21 days away, I'm excited to share news about new appointments to our administrative team and details for families and students about the new school year ahead. It's my pleasure to introduce to all of you Mrs. Emily Otero, to our Council Rock community. After a rigorous and thorough interview process, we're happy to announce that Emily will be assuming the principal role at Churchville Elementary School pending board approval tonight. Emily is currently the dean of students at the Skyview Upper Elementary School for grades five and six in the Methacton area school district. Emily has an impressive instructional background, having taught at the first, second, and sixth grade levels for over 15 years. She has proven leadership experience as a math specialist, curriculum coordinator, math Title I building coordinator, and a K-4 reading department coordinator. We are confident that Emily will be an asset to Churchville and to the entire Council Rock community, and we warmly welcome her to Council Rock. Perhaps the best exchange Emily and I had was our last phone call when she assured me that if I walk into kindergarten rooms, I will find her on the floor interacting with kindergarten students. It is also my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Don Mahalik. Mr. Mahalik is unable to join us tonight. We would like to welcome him to the Council Rock community pending board approval. We take very seriously our commitment to providing our students and staff with the most up-to-date and comprehensive security. And to that end, proudly announce that, again, pending board approval tonight, Don will be joining the Council Rock School District as manager of district security. Don's experience both nationally and locally is extensive, and he has deep knowledge and understanding of how to plan, develop, and implement security measures for organizations of all sizes. Don has served in the United States Coast Guard Reserve as lieutenant, served with the United States Park Police, he served as a SWAT team member and field training instructor, and served with the United States Secret Service. Don has initiated and developed threat assessment analysis at federal, state, and local levels, and is currently executive director of the Federal Law Enforcement Officers Association. We believe Don will use his talents to ensure safety and security of our district and welcome him to the Council Rock family as well. We'd like to thank the staff, community, and board members who gave their time and lent their expertise during the interview process for these two new additions to the Council Rock team. Right around the corner, we will be opening school. Now that the calendar is turned to August, it's time that we also turn our attention to the beginning of the 22-23 school year. A reminder of the most important information you will need to begin the year, such as supply list and calendar dates can be found on the Council Rock website or on your school's homepage. Over the summer, our classrooms and buildings were cleaned and repaired, and they are just about ready for students and staff to return. The Hillcrest Elementary renovation project is nearing completion, and the building looks great. I think Hillcrest students and families will appreciate and be proud of the updates and newness of the building. I know that Mrs. Jones Tate is anxious for students to get back into the building and begin learning. The Sulphine Stone renovation project is progressing as scheduled. Mr. Harland and his team are preparing and excited to welcome students and families back to Sulphine Stone for the new school year. The Richborough Elementary School renovation project discussion will continue during the upcoming finance meeting scheduled for Thursday night, August 11th, at 7:00 p.m. That's this week, Thursday, August 11th, 7:00 p.m., held here at the Chancellor Center. Council Rock teachers and administrators are already beginning their preparation for the new year. Last week, all Council Rock administrators met as a group to discuss the upcoming year and our district goals, as well as our Students First Always vision. Our goals center around three focused concepts summed up in these words: classroom, culture, and community. As we begin work on our district comprehensive plan, these concepts will play a large role in defining our collective vision for the future. Our teachers have been in their classrooms throughout the summer, preparing for students, but their official return will be Tuesday, August 23rd. Our teacher and staff opening kickoff will be held Wednesday, August 24th, at 7:30 a.m. at Council Rock North. This event is open to all staff, and while teachers are required to attend, all staff, regardless of assignment, are encouraged to attend. As our students and families are preparing to return, we want our community to know that the Home Access Center opens on August 15th. Parents should access the HAC from their home, school website, or go through the link on the Council Rock homepage. HAC information includes classroom and transportation assignments. There is also a link to demographic information that parents should check for each child. Durham and Council Rock have been working collaboratively and hard with regard to transportation. Durham Transportation assumed the role of transportation provider on Monday, August 1st. Council Rock staff and administrators were on site at all three of our schools, offering ESY on Monday, August 1st, and Tuesday, August 2nd. Teachers and support staff were also on site every day to help transition to a new bus service where needed. Durham's first two days of runs did not come without challenges. We met with Durham leadership to remind them of their commitment and our expectations. Accurate information was and will continue to be provided to our community regarding transportation. We visited the Durham Bus Depot and facility twice in the last five days. Board members and our transportation manager, Matt Adams, met at the Newtown Bus Depot to see buses firsthand, followed by a second visit by Matt Adams and myself. We spoke to management, and Matt and I boarded several buses, giving us a presence at the depot and eyes inside the buses on which our students will travel. Administrators from Council Rock will visit with Durham again during the week of August 15th, and we will have additional follow-up visits thereafter. Durham continues to work through the process of onboarding additional drivers, and we will continue to partner with Durham to mitigate any challenges that may arise with regard to routes, times, and bus stops, which is a typical occurrence at the start of every school year. Our elementary STEAM specialists, now known as the Council Rock STEAM Team, are meeting to plan curriculum for the upcoming year. We have a dynamic and well-rounded group of teachers who have experience at every elementary grade level. These teachers will continue to meet before the opening of school, and we are confident that they will have a robust and engaging program ready to roll as soon as our elementary students show up to school on the first day. This week is a very busy week, so please make a note of these events on your calendar. Our first community forum is scheduled on the topic of safety and security. It is scheduled for Wednesday, August 10th, from 7 until 8 p.m., and will take place at Newtown Middle School. Safety and security was chosen for this first forum in response to the results from the Bucks County Intermediate Survey expressed by the community during the superintendent search. The forum is an opportunity to inform our staff, families, and community of the proactive safety and security measures we are taking to ensure safe operation of our schools. The community is encouraged to attend. For those who cannot attend in person, the event will be livestreamed on the Council Rock YouTube channel and linked on the Council Rock website. Please mark your calendar for the September Community Forum, scheduled for Thursday, September 29th. Details on this event will be made available shortly. Again, with August upon us, please mark your calendar. Families in the Churchville Elementary School community are invited to meet and greet Mrs. Emily Otero, the new Churchville Principal, pending board approval tonight, on Tuesday, August 9th, at 6:00 p.m. Emily, that means you need to be there by 6:00, right? Ms. Otero will be welcoming students and families at Churchville, so please plan to stop by and say hello. Monday, August 15th, the Home Access Center opens, and as I mentioned earlier, the HAC will contain information about classroom assignments, schedules, and transportation information. Monday, August 29th, is the first day of school for students in grades K through 6, grade 7, and grade 9. On Tuesday, August 30th, all students report. A reminder for parents that the first week is a four-day week, and schools are closed for the long Labor Day weekend. The full 22-23 school year calendar can be found on the Council Rock website. Thank you, and that concludes my superintendent's report.
Think you got everything?
I think so.
It's a good one. Good evening, Mrs. Aronson, filling in for Rob Cox tonight. Any solicitor report, ma'am?
No report.
That was easy enough. From there, we're going to go to public comments. Matt, I don't have a sheet. Is there anybody in the audience that is wishing to have a public comment? Before I announce my big spiel, okay. Hearing none. From there, we're going to go to letter G. Mr. Tate, if you would, please, sir. The approval of the meeting minutes. I'll finish that so we don't get mixed, and then we'll move down. Thank you.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from July 21, 2022.
Second.
Second, Dr. Thorwart. Any comments or objections from the board? Hearing none, I'll ask the secretary to mark that unanimous. From there, folks, we're going to move down to personnel actions. Mr. Tate, with the two personnel actions, so we can get Ms. Otero home to her family, and she can come up and say some kind words or whatever.
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachment to this agenda. I move to approve the personnel actions addendum as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Marcel. Any comments from the board? Any objections from the board? Just give it a couple minutes for folks on the phone. Okay, hearing none. I'll ask the secretary to mark that unanimous consent. Congratulations, Ms. Otero.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the School Board of Directors and Dr. Sanco for this opportunity to serve Council Rock School District. Thank you to my family and my friends, especially Brian and Lucas, who are here tonight, for supporting me through this career journey and seeing this goal come to fruition. This is something that I've really desired for quite some time, to be an elementary school principal, so I'm very excited to be able to be part of the team here at Council Rock. I look forward to partnering with Churchville Elementary School parents, teachers, and support staff to continue a strong education and put students first, always. Thank you.
You're not getting away that easy.
What?
We, you and I had to bled you going through two rounds of interviews.
We did.
Mrs. McKee joined us for the last round, and then obviously you had a talk with Dr. Sanco.
Yes.
The thing that stuck out at me, and the board needs to hear this, the community needs to hear this. When I said this to you in the lobby, when I last saw you, you weren't a principal yet.
Yes.
Someday you were going to be. Tonight you are.
Tonight I am.
Explain the power of yet to the board. They'll enjoy it.
Oh, the power of yet. It's my mantra, I feel like, now. The power of yet is something that I instilled in my very first class of first graders, and I instill in my children, and it's really important that students and adults alike remember that it's not over until it's truly over. And yet is this three-letter word. It's so small, but so powerful. And so when you have something that you're not really sure what to do or how to get there, if you just add yet to the end of that sentence, the whole perspective changes. You have a growth mindset, and that's so critical for students, especially currently in our post, kind of post-pandemic world. And really adding that little three-letter word is really important. So when a kindergartner or first grader says, "Oh, I can't read that." Yet. I don't know how to figure out that word problem, yet. Adding that three-letter word is very important. It was important to my work with students in the math department, and work with students when they were learning how to read as little guys. So it's very important to me to bring that to Council Rock and to Churchville, and so I look forward to working with all of you in the future, and our power of yet. And I saw my yet today.
On behalf of the board, congratulations. Your work cut out for you. I know the Churchville community is eager to meet you.
Excited.
I will personally see you tomorrow night.
Perfect. Wonderful.
Because you're buying ice cream, I was told.
Absolutely.
No, sincerely, thank you for the process. Thank you for being here. Thank you to your family for bringing her to us and making her a part of the Council Rock team.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want a quick picture? Do you want a quick picture before you run out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, folks. From there, we'll go to Education Committee. Good evening, Mrs. McKee.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Solomon. I have no committee report. Education Committee will meet again Thursday, September 22nd, and at that meeting, we look forward to being updated on the newly implemented STEAM program. I now move to approve consent agenda items B through H as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Marcel. Any comments from the board? Any objections from the board? Hearing none, just mark that, ask the secretary to mark that consent. I believe Ms. Pally's on the phone now. So we marked her present. From there, we'll move to the...
Yes, I'm there.
I guess it's good morning. Good morning, Mrs. Pally. IU report, ma'am?
So the IU board meeting was actually scheduled for next week, so there's nothing really need to report, other than I reached out to Mark Hoffman, and he said that they are very proud that the IU coordinates the summer's extended school year program, and they've reached this time more than 1,000 students across Bucks County, and they are very, very proud of that accomplishment. That's all for from the IU this time.
Okay, thank you. From there, MBIT, you guys just came back from your meeting. Mr. Hickey, you going to cover it?
Sure. Yes, we did just come back from a meeting earlier tonight, and as a matter of fact, as it relates to the facilities meeting, we may be late or not be able to attend because we are still conducting interviews for a new director, and this is the second round, so our attendance at this meeting is rather vital, and it is one of our responsibilities as board members for Council Rock. So there's this little conflict there that was unavoidable. That being said, at our meeting, we mostly discussed a lot of the time we spent on what happened last year and the successes at the school. They did offer an explanation of what happened with the summer exploration program there for grades, kids going into grades seven, eight, nine, and 10. They had 254 students there, and they offered 12 programs. It was mentioned to possibly order, offer, a second week of this. Right now, they only do it for one, but like I said, things are going very well there. The interim director we have is working out very well, keeping us posted on all the items going on, and much like us, we're just trying to prepare for the new school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anything? Mrs. Marcel, you good?
Mr. Hickey did an excellent job. I have nothing to add.
From there, we're going to go to letter K. Mr. Tate, Creff, any update?
No, it's a quiet period for us. Thank you.
All golfed out, right? From there, we're going to go to Policy Committee. Dr. Thorwart, good evening, sir.
Evening. Thank you. We've got four items on the agenda tonight. The first couple are first reads. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fredrickson in a minute, but they're broken up this way because traditionally, the board has done a first read, second read for policies, and we should do that for some of these. Item E, the change to responsibilities, that's due to title changes and reorganization inside of the Chancellor Center and the org chart. I'm going to ask that we forego the first read on the change to responsibilities. There's a whole series of them listed here, just because we need it. We don't have some of the people we did, you know, in titles we did before. With that, Mr. Fredrickson, do you want to take over?
Sure, I love power. The first policy on the agenda, policy 6.1, attendance at meetings via electronic communications. When the pandemic hit, we started doing all of our meetings via electronic communications, and the changes to this policy simply reflect our current practice and our current practice for the past three years.
Mr. Solomon, do you want to start on that one?
Yeah, I mean, it's been no secret, you know, if you speak to some community members or, you know, you read some social media pages, there's some concern about board members and their attendance and how they get to meetings and not get to meetings. So I asked Rob Cox to review the policy to see his thoughts, first of all, and Aaron's here tonight in his place. Aaron and I have already spoken. You know, whether or not we address a policy tonight, or we talk about it when we should talk about it, what's best for the board, what's best for the district, what's best for the people that we're serving. And I want to be, you know, I just want to be consistent in this. I don't have a job that flies me to meetings around the country, around the world. I don't have a job that takes me places where I can't be, or my Thursdays, personally, are usually blocked off for this within reason. But I can't speak for every board member, and I know we have board members calling in this evening. So I think the policy that, to Mr. Fredrickson's point, that we've done the last several years, at least I've been on the board, has been consistent. We've had board members who couldn't attend or didn't attend during the pandemic for their safety. So I think it's a good time to settle down the public in this area, if we can, address some concerns that may be floating out there or not. So this is the time to have a public conversation about this policy, per se, and Aaron, I know I've asked you our policy compared to other districts around Bucks County. I know ours is a little deeper, so to speak. But, you know, so this is an open conversation I'd like to have, to just get this off the, you know, off the plate of some people who are very, or seem to be outspoken about it. Mrs. McKee, you and I have spoke about this, you know, offline as well, so anybody want to jump in?
So if I may, thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciated the conversation with you about this, Mr. Solomon. And I definitely understand and am sympathetic to people's needs in terms of being unable to be here physically, and I've gone back and forth with this myself, and we were able to, you know, get through times when folks had to do this remotely, and we were able to, you know, use communications, telectronics successfully in doing that. After more consideration, I want to speak in favor of retaining the current policy. When this just applies to board meetings, not committee meetings, but just board meetings, there are 12 a year. They are published well in advance, and I know all of us are very committed to our work here and to being here and to working together. Personally, I find it so much more beneficial to sit physically with my colleagues and have the conversation in person. I think by requiring this, we're in no way diminishing anyone's ability to participate, because I know everyone is extremely committed to their work on this board. Our public has elected us. Our constituents expect this of us. And as a publicly elected official, I personally feel that in-person participation in the meetings is really critical. With the exceptions in the current policy of permission to be remote for two meetings or apply for exemptions for other meetings, I feel it adds enough flexibility for our board colleagues who find it necessary to not be here physically. So while I certainly want to respect the needs of others, I want to speak in favor of retaining the policy and encouraging colleagues that we commit to attending meetings in person. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are you going to run this process, or Joe Hidalgo's just...
Go ahead. I mean, in this room, it's kind of hard. You've been the facilitator. You might as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hidalgo, you want to comment, sir?
Sure, thank you. I am in favor of the change. I think that it does, as Matt Fredrickson said, reflect the policies we've had over the last three years, and it does provide for some flexibility in a new age. So we could always tweak it later on if it looks like that somebody's abusing this, you know, latitude. But again, I think for me, I would like to hear from the solicitor and a little more detail on, are we more stringent than other boards? Are we less stringent than other boards? And is it legal what we're doing and all that good stuff? I know, as you said, you had a conversation with her, but I think for me, before I would vote, would like to hear just a little bit more from the attorneys on where we are, and especially on the scale of, are we over, are we more stringent with our attendance policy or less when it comes to neighboring districts?
To address Mr. Hidalgo's question, generally speaking, the board has a great deal of discretion on this subject and can make a policy that's reasonable and practical for itself. In terms of what other districts are doing, a number of districts in Bucks County generally have the same policy. Some have a more liberal policy where there's not the limit to two remote meetings, which is the revision that I had seen put forth for tonight. So there's some variation, of course, with many following the same policy that you currently have in place or one that's maybe a little bit more liberal. But there are several ways to revise this, so there's, as you can imagine, a lot of variation, but that's the general sense.
I appreciate that. I'm all ears, listening in. Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Thank you, Joe. Mrs. Pally?
Yes, I mean, I'm clearly calling in, so I am in favor of the change in the policy for a couple of reasons. One is, I know we are all elected officials, and we participate to the maximum possible. We, at the same time, we all have jobs and businesses to attend to, and there are times that either physically we cannot attend because of business, or because maybe there is sickness or some other, like, really good reason. And the use of technology, especially during COVID, proved that there are many things that can be done remotely and virtually, and we can definitely participate in full this way, if needed, definitely not to abuse it. And we need to have good excuses in order to do it virtually and remotely. But I'm in favor of using the technology in order to be able to fully attend and participate in these meetings. And I know there was a lot of chatting in social media against it, but I have, you know, we have to remind people that this is public service. We are elected, and we're doing the best we can. At the same time, these are not paid positions, and we do have families to feed, jobs... At the same time, these are not paid positions, and we do have families to feed, jobs to attend to and business meetings and traveling. So if the board can accommodate that, I think that's great. And my only request would be to, if we can do Zoom meetings, so we can, we can have like a virtual face at the same time image instead of just listening to, because the, the channel on YouTube has a delay, but it seems, you know, you can listen to it and participate very easily, but Zoom would make it even, even more direct if that is an option. I know that may be difficult from a technology perspective, but if that's an option, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hickey, please.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking that maybe we could have some kind of compromise with it. Like you said, I, I think too, meeting two board meetings is rather stringent, and like you said, for clarification, they mean board meetings such as tonight and not committee meetings, although a lot of that work gets done in the committee meeting, so it's actually important that you intend, attend those as well in one shape, way, shape, or form. But like I said, I think two is rather stringent. Like, for example, everybody has their reasons for missing, whether it's your job overseas or, you know, your business traveling. I know we had one member call into a meeting from, from Mexico and another time at an airport, so the effort is being made by board members to attend these meetings. I do like your idea about the face-to-face. I think it is important to see everybody and get to see the public, and they get to see us as opposed to doing it, but I don't think anybody is shirking their responsibilities. I think a lot of this was possibly driven by social media. I know, I know I myself, I appreciated it back, you know, in December, the January timeframe. I was incapacitated for a time being, as everyone well knows, but I only missed one meeting because I had the ability to do it remotely. But like I said, maybe it could be four or something, but personally, I don't think anybody's shirking it. I would be in favor of not keeping the policy as is, but maybe, like you said, definitely making it more lenient.
Aaron, I would ask, I mean, whether or not you put a, you know, two or four, what, what is the ramifications or what could the ramifications and how would that work for a member that's, that's not adhering to that? I mean, we would looking to have a removal of that board member? Is that something that, you know, this board or any board would want to do or could do? I mean, walk me through that.
The standard for that would be, would be much higher. So it would be really, we'd be looking more at like an abandonment of the position as opposed to, you know, participating remotely or that kind of thing. So in terms of ramifications, if they were to exceed two, four, however many remote meetings, that really would be at the discretion of the board if there was a procedure in the policy, but otherwise, wouldn't rise to the level of a school code violation or something of that nature.
Thank you, Dr. Thorwart. I saw your eyes rolling at me.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mrs. McKee. I really do. To Mr. Hickey's point, four meetings is, is 33% of all the board meetings that, that you would be serving on not being in this room. I think that's too high. I think two came because two was out of 12. There's really only 12. Now lately, we've had a lot of emergency meetings. I think this board would have been flexible with them. I don't think that's the norm. It was the norm as we transitioned the administration, administrative team. I, after Mr. Solomon asked to put this on a while back, I kicked around, well, how about if you're remote, you can't vote, but that strikes me as harsh too. That cuts a lot of ways, you know? I, I'm trying to incentivize showing up in this room, I guess is, so I, I'm, I'm with Mrs. McKee on this one, and furthermore, I don't want to make it easier to do this remotely either. I, that's, that, that, again, to try and incentivize people to show up in this room and do what you were elected to do as much as you can is where I am with this. So I'm, I'm happy to have this discussion. I don't think we're going to solve it tonight, but the current policy is the current policy, so.
Are you deep in thought, Mr. Tate, or you?
Always, but now it's about this issue. I've thought a lot about this, really, because I am torn. Ms. McKee makes an excellent point. There's things that you can do in person, especially when you're talking about a deliberative body, that you can't really do effectively remotely. There are times when you have to call in. I've done it on business travel. So it's, it's sort of a, it's a tough decision. There is the possibility of requesting an exemption if, if one has already missed two meetings and might miss a third. But I got a phone call today from a member of the community who was concerned about this and asked my opinion, and I said, you know, one of the things that occurs to me is the community really doesn't have any idea how much time board members put in outside of this room and outside of committee meetings. And a good example is MBIT, the IU and other responsibilities, preparing for meetings, phone calls, reading email, and we've got a lot of reading material to go through. So it's, a part of the job is being here in person, part of it's doing all those other things that we need to do. So, and, and interestingly, some of the board members who tend to be those who travel are some of those who are most engaged in, in other stuff, you know, other board business such as MBIT and so forth. So I think it's a tough call, but I'm willing to amend the policy as proposed.
The, the other thing that was mentioned, I didn't mention in my beginning is that, you know, we're not all going to be here at some point, and are you doing a disservice to a, somebody that wants to do the job, what's best for kids in this position, but they have a job too, but can manage it? Are, are we, are we going to push them away from an opportunity to serve their community? And I don't have an answer for that because my Thursdays are generally here for the most part, but that's just me and I, but I, so you, Mary Ann, you and I spoke about that. We can't relate, you and I talked about Thursdays at chancellor, you know, and of course, we have vacations that pop up and things, but is there that community member out there that knows how to juggle this but needs to be somewhere else that third week of, of, of the month? Because no matter when you change the board dates, it's going to affect that person some way. So that's, Ed, I, I agree. I, you know, I'm torn on this, but I'm, I'm also not in a position like other board members or prospective board members could be with travel and commitments elsewhere. So that's kind of where I, I sit on that. Mr. Roosevelt, you're on the phone, sir? Any thoughts?
I, I am, thank you. I've enjoyed listening to this. This is my first experience remoting in, and, and I, I agree with Mrs. McKee that when we're there face-to-face, I've enjoyed much of these meetings, deliberations when we're in person, and I think it's very important, I agree. At the same time, I recognize that we are volunteers. We're not getting compensated for this. So I, I liked the direction that Mr. Hidalgo was going, asking our solicitor a few questions such as what is the virtual or remote-in policy of some of our other school districts? What is the remote phone-in policy for compensated board members of perhaps publicly traded companies? And regardless of that, I'm also okay with keeping our policy as is or amending it, but one, one thing comes up to my mind that I struggle with. If we have a policy and there's no ramifications, what's the point of the policy? And I agree that if you're out four times 33%, that's significant. I think we as a board need to understand what constitutes abandonment, as, as our solicitor indicated, because perhaps that should also factor in to this. I, I might submit perhaps that no two times in a row would be an issue. Two times a year, maybe that's on point, maybe it should be three, you know? I, I'm not sure. Like I mentioned, I'm, I'm okay leaving this as is or changing it, but I do think that it's problematic if we behave in one way and have been behaving in one way and our policy hasn't reflected it. So it may be a time to change, maybe it should have been changed before. This is, this is the task at hand. This is what we're doing, we're deliberating right now. It's, what happens also if you have a member that's able to participate remotely and the board needs to get it done? Can that issue wait an extra month? You know, a lot of these things should perhaps steer this. So I'll, I'll put the questions back to the solicitor regarding how we compare to other districts and how we compare to publicly traded companies, and perhaps that will help us take a step, whether this needs to be amended, stricken, or left alone. Thank you.
You're researching away here. Do you need a couple minutes, or?
No, I think.
Okay.
Mr. Roosevelt, in terms of publicly traded company, is that something that our office would want to look into? And in terms of other districts locally, the, the policy that's adopted and currently in place is one that is widely used throughout the county and also the state. I have seen it been modified so that it's a little bit more liberal. One provision that possibly has been revised in some places to be a little bit more restrictive would be the quorum provision and whether you can have a quorum of, of directors who are participating remotely or not. Generally speaking, though, in terms of the number of meetings that have to be, you know, the maximum number of meetings that can be remote, most districts are adhering to the two or have done away with that provision entirely.
Bobby has your hand up?
Yeah, thanks. I, I was just, just off the top of my head, I was thinking as somebody referenced, like, what's the point of having a policy if there's no repercussions for breaking the policy? And, and really, this has no teeth. I mean, what happens? I mean, does it go before the board and we all just say, oh, that's okay to you, Ms. Forer, and go on your merry way? I don't know if this is even possible, feasible, or whatever, but maybe a possibility is if you pass that threshold, say, for example, I sit on the MBIT committee and I miss multiple meetings here with no, you know, no apparent reason, no conflicts like I had tonight or Thursday, that maybe I get stripped of my committeeship. Now, I don't know if that's too punitive or not, but if we're going to have a policy, either have, either go completely, whether it's pretty lame or, as I always say, put teeth in, I, I always say this with the people we sign contracts with, let's put some teeth into not adhering to what the standard is. So maybe that's something that we could at least consider.
Dr. Thorwart, oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Marcel, please.
I just had a kind of a thought. So when you look at the participation in terms of two times, you know, throughout the calendar year, that language doesn't really reflect the special meetings that we have. And so we, we all have a calendar that we're aware of for the year, but anything that's a special meeting is still considered a board meeting. So I would propose that perhaps we delineate between the two types of meetings. So maybe the ones that are scheduled, there's some type of requirement. Maybe there's a different requirement for the special meetings. I'm happy to talk about any options, but I know sometimes the special meetings, you know, they're scheduled and hopefully you can attend. I know everyone tries to either call in or participate in person. I think everyone on this board always tries to participate the best they can, given all of their, you know, kind of conflicts and obligations. So that's just, you know, trying to think of a compromise or a way to, to make people happy who want in-person participation, but also to think about the flexibility that most, you know, companies and most people have where you can call in or participate from Zoom or another platform. So it's just a, just a thought because I know sometimes those are scheduled and, and they can't wait. You know, we have board business that has to move forward and they're, they're typically done within a very specific time period, and so that still would allow a board member to represent their constituents in their area, even if they aren't, like I, you know, I don't necessarily agree with not allowing someone to, to vote, but they could participate. But I'm, I'm very open to ideas, just trying to listen to some of the comments tonight. Thank you.
As policy chair, I'm trying to land this for tonight because we're not going to solve it tonight. Mr. Fredrickson, maybe we'll go back and, and, and work with our solicitor about, you know, what other, what, what we've got in other school districts, give this another go around. You know, I, I heard comments about, you know, no two, two meetings in a row, that, that would be a problem. And a lot of business, two meetings in a row is, is two months of a 10-month school, that's a lot of business where you weren't in this room. Let us go back and look at it again, but before we move on, and we can certainly obviously keep talking about this, for our solicitor, Aaron, the board can choose or not choose to follow its policies. I mean, how, how does that work? I mean, Rob has always kind of indicated, yeah, we've got a policy but. So what's the but?
The but just generally speaks to your discretion and the fact that the board has the policy, has the power to modify the policies, you know, makes it surely best practice to, to follow them to the extent possible, but also to acknowledge that the board has the authority to amend them at any time. So that gets factored in as well.
And the reason I asked, you know, to this point, to, you know, we can always, you know, vote to allow someone that third meeting or whatever. Maybe, maybe that's the, the, that's the enforcement mechanism too. We're going to publicly have to vote, which means we're going to publicly say you've missed X number of meetings. It, it's not going to be a good look unless you can justify it, so maybe, maybe that's how we do it. So I, I would ask that we go back. The, the new policy in front of you was just to, for current practice, the old policy was what we were supposed to be doing. Let us do some more work on it and we'll bring it to the next meeting, unless there's more discussion here. Does that, I mean, Matt, you've captured pretty much everything we've, we've talked about, so.
Yes, sir, and I have a YouTube video so I can watch if I missed anything.
That's true too, so. Opinions?
Mike, it's Joe Hidalgo.
Yeah, Joe.
Is there, is there, I'm just wondering if the room, where the room is, that proposal to go back and put in, who's going to decide what the language is?
The way this, can I answer that? The way this process will work, Mr. Hidalgo, is we'll research the information that was asked tonight, we'll try to apply the languages best we can to the policy, then we'll send it out to the board for their review for comment, and if there's enough consensus, we'll bring it back to the board for a new first read or a second read, depending on how the policy is or isn't modified.
All right, thank you.
I anticipate a new first read, to be, to be fair, I anticipate a new, unless we just revert to, you know, one of these two, so.
Based on the conversation this evening, I would agree.
Joe, just for your edification, the new one was written by Mr. Cox when I sent it to him to, to take a look at the current policy, how we're looking towards that and what, if any, changes could be made to that policy. So that, that was reviewed and that's the suggestion of Mr. Cox.
Good. Well, that's why I was hoping we had a policy meeting, we could do that during a policy committee meeting, not during the board meeting. But thank you for that information, it's important.
The next policy on the agenda is policy 246. There were, there was a wellness committee meeting that was held over the summer. The changes in the policy that were prevent, that are presented to you this evening reflect the conversations that were had at that meeting. However, after we've read through the changes, we find there's no really substantive changes in the revised policy, and we're recommending that no changes be made to the existing policy. In other words, I'd like to just pull it off the agenda if that's okay.
And Matt, that, that reflects, that's clear with PDE and stuff, that current policy.
That's correct.
Any, just, any objections? Any objections on the phone to just leaving our policy the way it was?
No. No objections to be paid.
I think.
No objections either.
Thank you. Then the third policy, policy 324, the changes in that policy are at the recommendation of our solicitor.
Erin, you want?
Yes, I'm sorry, but the policy 324 personnel files, the changes to that policy were made by, or recommended to us by Mr. Cox.
That's correct. A number of those are, these are policies that designate an individual for various roles, so notice from the public, that type of thing. A number of them refer to positions that either no longer exist or have changed. So these are now revising and updating that so that it's current and the public has a, a current person that they can reach out to.
Any discussions on this one? Any discussions on the phone? All right, we'll, we'll bring that one back for a, a.
Second read.
And vote. And then the last is a series of just changes based on Director of Secondary Education, Director of Elementary, had some changes to the administrative org chart. Matt, do you want to mention anything there? I'm going to ask for a vote on this one tonight because these are really, uh, simple changes.
With the reorg of the cabinet and the removal of some positions and the addition of new positions, some of the verbiage in the policies are required to change. We do need to identify specific individuals. Perfect example is Title, Title IX. So all the changes, and I did list them all in the agenda, are, are where some of the, some of the policies, there's specific changes, particular paragraphs, other policies, especially down in operations, like the Director of Operations is mentioned several times, that will simply be replaced by superintendent or designee.
Yes, I mean, I'll ask Erin to help me craft a motion on this, but any discussion? I mean, you know, some of these are, we had a Director of, uh, Student Wellness or what was, go ahead, Andy, tell me our Assistant Superintendent's role, what, I mean.
Yeah, or we had an Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. We no longer have that position. We now have Director of Elementary Education and a Director of Secondary Education, and the policy calls for us to identify someone in those policies, as Matt indicated.
Right. So any questions amongst, I mean, these are just, this is product of org change. Any questions on the phone?
Nope.
Okay. No, it seems pretty clear and understandable.
Mike, I just talked to Erin. Go ahead, I'm sorry, you, look ahead.
No, no, I don't, I don't have any, anything to say. It's pretty clear. Thank you.
We need to vote on 246 to keep it. Student Wellness. She wants, she wants a vote on that, and then change of responsibilities would be a vote. Personnel Files would be a vote as well, right?
We could.
Yeah. And then the only one that'll go back for a second read, if you will, or for additional work would be 006.1. Is that, that's the way I read this.
Okay, so I'll give you three motions. We'll do them one at a time. That would be fine. Okay, we'll start with 246. I move to keep the current policy number 246 as attained, as, as listed in this agenda. That's it, as listed in this agenda.
Second, Mr. Hickey. Any comments? Any objections from the board? I'm going to ask the Secretary to mark that unanimous, 246 stays the same. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, for policy two, 324, I move to approve the revised policy 324 as contained in this agenda.
Second. Second, Mr. Hickey. Any further comment or objections from the board? Hearing none, I'll ask the Secretary to mark that unanimous as well. Continue, Mike.
And then lastly, I move to make the list of modifications to existing policy to change designees as listed in this agenda.
Second. Second, Mr. Hickey. Any further comments from the board? How about objections? All right, hearing none, I'll ask the Secretary to mark that unanimous as well.
And we will bring the first one back.
We will bring 006.1 back. All right, from there, we'll move to Finance Committee. Mr. Hidalgo, your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Since the last board meeting, we haven't had a finance committee, uh, meeting, so I have nothing to report. The next meeting is August 11th, this Thursday, 7:00 PM. And with that, I will move on to the consent agenda items. And then there's one item I pulled out to discuss since it hasn't been discussed yet. So I move to approve consent agenda item B, C, E as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second, Mrs. Marcel. Any comments, Ms. Hickey?
I just have one, maybe a little, uh, I, I'm going to approve it. I have no real issue with it, but it's the one where it says item F, approving the North and South Junior Prom Contracts.
That's, that's not part of this one. He only did.
That's why I pulled it out, Mike. I mean, Bob.
B, B through E. Okay. You're good? Any further comments? Any objections? Hearing none, I'll ask the Secretary to mark that unanimous. Go ahead, Joe, keep going.
All right. So F, I move to approve the Council Rock North and South Junior Prom Contracts for 2023 as attached to this agenda, subject to audit.
Second.
Second, Dr. Thorwart. Now, any comments?
Uh, I'm going to see, Mr. Dr. Senko, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, it's, I think I wanted to, I saw this earlier and I was like, I didn't want to forget about saying anything about it. I just sometimes wonder if we don't overdo it for some of these kids. As, as all my kids went through their proms, and I looked at where these kids go and what they do, and I almost wonder, what is there to do your senior year as far as a prom goes? This is almost, the price that these kids are paying, I mean, it becomes unaffordable for some of these kids. And I just sometimes wonder, I know it's approved by the student advisory boards and the principals, but I just wish maybe it would be considered to maybe scale it down a little bit. I mean, I know things can work out very well. For example, Pensbury, I know, has their senior prom at their school, and it's a wonderful event. And I'm not saying that necessarily we do that, but it seems like sometimes we might go over the top with some of the things we do. And we eliminate some of the kids who might have an opportunity to go, and I just wish that maybe it would be considered in the future that maybe we don't go shooting for the stars all the time, that, you know, we go for someplace that'll work for more of the student body.
Mr. Tate.
I'm glad Mr. Hickey raised this issue. I think it's a broad issue that pertains to travel. It pertains to sports. It pertains to all sorts of activities because there are families for whom this kind of activity is a financial strain, especially senior year, when you're talking about a Disney trip, prom, sports on top of that. And I guess my question would be, is there an option for a family that finds prom to be unaffordable? Can they appeal to their class principal for some sort of relief on the fee, Dr. Senko?
Yeah, thank you both for your question and your point. Mr. Funk and I spoke about this today, and I asked that when this topic came up tonight, he'd be prepared to speak on it. Mr. Funk?
Yeah, it's, it's a tough topic. We've been, Council Rock North has been at the junior prom at the Princeton Hyatt for the last 20 years. So it does become difficult to put the toothpaste back in the tube, so to speak, and our senior proms tend to be even a little bit more extravagant when you look at, you know, the Wanamaker Tea Room in the United States Constitution Center. But to answer your question, Mr. Tate, we do work with students and families who have a financial hardship. We try to kind of keep all those things on the QT. They work through the individual class principal and the school social workers. I can see both sides of the issue. Certainly having a large dance like, like you see at Pensbury on school campus, there's, there's tremendous benefit to that in terms of school spirit and, and some of the things that are associated with it. Then, on the other hand, and I, I guess it's kind of the other end of the spectrum, you really have some teenagers who love to dress up, buy the dress, rent the limo, and take a ride to Princeton, New Jersey, and have the time of their life. So it's, it's a difficult call. I will tell you that we always consult our student government. You mentioned student advisory board, student executive board, and try to involve the students as much as possible in terms of driving these decisions. Is that helpful?
Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, Mr. Funk, the only thing I would add, I mean, just because we've done it for 20 years, if we're starting to see an increase of needs, you know, let's not just rubber stamp this every year, because I, I struggle to say that families are going to, next several years, it's going to be tough. So just because we did it, doesn't mean it's not time to look at it. And, and, and I think we can find some monies, we can find some creative ways of ensuring that those kids can partake. I don't want a kid left behind. We did that to the kids in 2020. They had no problems. So, you know, whatever we got to do to get those kids there, or we rethink it. I think that's, that's something I, I would be happy to hear, so. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Solomon?
Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's okay. Mr. Funk, uh, if it's $65 per unit plus the 25% gratuity, is it about $80 per unit for South? Is that about $85? Do you, do you have an idea what the all-in cost is?
Yeah, I think that, that's roughly what the cost is.
Roughly, 85 bucks, right. And I know in some cases, we've had the senior trip, which is very expensive, right, to Disney World, and sometimes kids are awarded needs-based, uh, help. Maybe that's on private contributions, but is that something we're doing for prom also? What could we do?
Yes, of cour, uh, on an as-needed basis, we will help any student family who has a financial hardship. Usually that's done, you know, again, through the grade-level principal, guidance counselor, or school social worker, and, and we're here to help. We don't want it to be an obstacle for students. And the other thing that we.
And I think, yeah.
Really try hard to make sure that we are comparable in our prices between North and South. So even though we have different venues, we want to really make sure that the prices are in the same price range.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'm sure we all will give support however we can. So, thank you.
Any other? Joe, any other comments?
Could I, could I jump in?
Yeah, sure.
Hello? Okay, great. Mr. Funk, I appreciate your details on this, that this is a administrative and student collaborative, that the board is effectively approving something that the kids and the teachers and the administration have already worked through. I also appreciate the notions of keeping things similar between North and South, and I, I agree that it's important that we not exclude people here. I wonder if, over the past 20 years, or five years, or whatever metric, if we've had any element of attendance, have we seen attendance declining? Have we seen, is that something even that's tracked? To, because that might give an indication to the committees that set these up, that plan these, that spend a lot of time and a lot of energy amongst the school educational element of this district, that they also look to, to celebrate that. So I'm wondering if, if anything is done to track attendance and compare that to the body, and, and if that's declining or increasing or staying the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So we, I do not have any exact data in terms of attendance trend over the last five, seven years, but I will tell you, just from my own experience, being a high school principal for the last 15 years, I have not seen great fluctuation in the junior prom and senior prom attendance. We generally have, you know, about 1,000 to 1,200 students at attendance in these events, so they're, they're rather well-attended.
I'm happy to hear it's successful. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any objections to this? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the Secretary to mark that unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hidalgo.
You're welcome.
From there, we go to the second round of public comment. Is there anybody who wants to make a public comment? Please come forward and state your name and township you're from. Do I need to read the disclaimer? I don't think so.
It takes three seconds.
Okay, thanks.
My name is Wendy Nowicki. I'm in Newtown, and I just wanted to provide some information because I know we're just talking about the prom because we just did it, and I completely understand all of the, the aspects of that. But when we're talking about the Pensbury prom that they hold at the high school, they have a, a six-figure budget, and their tickets are 115 for students, and so it's not just an end-all answer to hold it at the school, because that costs over $100,000 for that prom, which is well over the, the budget line for this one. So I just want us to understand that when we're talking about this and have that knowledge. Isn't that it?
Entertainment was $20,000 this year.
Yes. Yeah, there, it's, there's a lot, and the kids have to do floats, and it's amazing, and it's on the news, but it's not an easy budget answer for this.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing there, we're going to move to new business of the board. Any new business? Mr. Tate?
If I may.
Again.
By the way, there's a wonderful book about the Pensbury prom called Wonderland. I recommend it highly. It's, it's really an entertaining book. I'd like to propose that we discuss policy 227 at the November meeting of the Policy Committee. I'll put that as a request.
I, I can, I can address that one, Mr. Solomon. We were going to do it tonight at the request of the administration. They asked for more time. So I don't particularly have a horse in the race for when you do it. I'm going to ask Mr. Funk and team, will the November timeframe be okay?
No, I think November will be perfect, and we'll be prepared to discuss that policy more in depth. We are researching some data from surrounding school districts. I think the issue most on folks' mind with that particular policy involves the consequence for an offense. 45 days is what our current policy states. So we're doing our due diligence as an administrative team to do our research, and I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to come back in November and have some fruitful dialogue around the policy and the consequences.
Mr. Tate, I, I envision the policy meeting being just that, that one. I mean, really, I think that'll be enough discussion for one night, so.
I, I was aware the administration's working on it. I'm very appreciative, so.
My only, my only further comment would be, you know, we'd have to consider when it gets implemented. You suspend a kid in September under the old policy and you make a change, how's that going to roll itself out? So just, that's something that's been ticking away at me as well, you know, when, we almost have to position any changes at the beginning of a school year. Or assume whatever comes along with it when we don't, and that's, that's beyond my scope, Mr. Tate. Thanks. Any old business of the board? All right, hearing none. Anybody on the phone with any comments?
No, thank you.
All right, good evening on the phone. That's it. Have a good evening, hug your kids. kids.